And everyone, uh, welcome to the Creek County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, March the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and it's nine o'clock AM. Um, first of all, do the pledge of allegiance and Mike Urban, would you lead us in that, please?
Yes, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is public comment, and I'd like to ask John, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Pastor Chris Cookston, Prineville Community Church, uh, commissioners have invited me to come and and open us with a with a basic invocation, so please pray with me. Our Father in heaven, with grateful hearts we bow before you. We thank you for every soul that has gathered into this place. We thank you for our public servants here, the commissioners and others. We thank you for every concerned citizen that came to this meeting. Lord, you tell us in your word, uh, that if we are to live a tranquil and quiet life and all godliness and dignity, that we need to make prayers and petitions and thanksgiving on on behalf of kings and all who are in authority. So, Father, we ask that you would grant wisdom to our commissioners and our citizens. And then we pray that you would guide this meeting, uh, in in peace and with the love of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. It's in Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. Public comment, John?
Commissioners, um, should allow me to step in for a second. Uh, yesterday at, um, Senator Wyden's Town Hall, Julie Thompson asked a really good question. And, um, I feel like the answer she got was a frustrating answer. It didn't seem like the right forum. It was a great question, kind of a complicated answer, and I was hoping I could, uh, step in and and answer a question now. Or we go to public comment and then they can.
I think he might.
You need to speak up.
Yeah.
I'm speaking, is that?
That's to get heard.
Yeah, they're right on me. Um, so, uh, Julie, I want to see your question yesterday was, this is regarding the groundwater situation, um, around the Knife River mine. Who can pull the CUP? Uh, like she said, the county's bringing the state and the state's bringing the county, who can pull it?
Question?
So, growing was right, the the CUP is a county issue, um, and the state cannot pull the conditional use permit. Um, the county can, county absolutely can pull a conditional use permit. Um, but that's not the end of the story. Uh, we could send them a letter this afternoon and say their conditional use permit has been pulled. Uh, but we aren't the final authority and, um, from there, they can appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, uh, they can file for injunction circuit court, they can do all sorts of things. And whatever we do at the county level would need to be, uh, defended at those higher courts, either with one of our attorneys or, um, the the neighbors could intervene and they could have the attorney of their own try to defend that. Uh, but for us to do that would be an extremely hard uphill battle. Um, whatever we decide will need to be supported by substantial evidence in the record. We don't have that yet. The current case law says that if you're trying to revoke a conditional use permit, uh, even for misleading information at the time the permit was granted, uh, the counties do not get a second bite at the apple. And so, um, the question of who can pull it, that's us, but but who can do it effectively? That's a much tougher question to answer. Uh, and so the end result, if we try to do that, um, with what we have now is most likely that what we try to do gets reversed, um, after a lot of time and a lot of money spent. And so, uh, what I brought up to the town hall was that it's not just a conditional use permit, Knife River is allowed to operate because they have the conditional use permit with us. They have the dogami operating permit, um, operations, and they also have the DEQ water pollution control permit. And where the laws are set up, those are the state agencies that are supposed to govern these things. And if it endangers the public, they're supposed to be able to step in and stop things. And so, um, ground rattles, we've said, is under the exclusive jurisdiction of the state. That means that they are the ones that get to control, um, and and so what happens with that to the exclusion of local governments? Um, and so it, I I I understand it probably feels like finger pointing, but what what I'm trying to explain to you is it's it's a complicated situation. And the condition is permanent as a land use issue. Um, and if if what you want is, you know, I don't know what you got, if you want the the ponds to be lined, if you want Knife River to go away, those things, um, I think the best path forward to get there is to support the state sampling to get more data. If they can connect the dots, they have the express authority to do something. Um, that's the smoothest path to get there. And so, um, it's, it's not an easy, the the whole situation is complicated. I want to make sure that you have the information, you need to ask the right questions to get the right answers, to know where to go. Um, another option is going directly to Knife River because, you know, they can snap their fingers and do whatever they want without a government telling them what to do. But so I'm I'm sorry if you were frustrated with their answer yesterday. Um, it's a complicated situation. If you have any other questions, I'm here to answer them.
Yes, you can come up and speak.
Yep.
I guess my question to that is.
For the record, could you state your name, please?
My name is Julie Thompson. Um, my question to to that would be, I understand that it's, it is more in depth than just the CUP. But if it's a land use issue, because, or land use permit this year, so if that's the case, how, with all the complaints that have happened, at what point, how many times does it take for you to have, I guess, grounds to stand on to pull that permit where it won't get revoked? And is that why there's an additional law firm? Are they helping with that in some aspects?
There's a few reasons for the outside counsel. Um, the first is that, uh, you know, I've been advising the county on this for a while, and my role as an attorney is ending. My role has ended on this matter, um, and my role as an attorney for the county in general is going to be done in here in a couple of weeks. And this issue obviously is not going away. And so we will somewhat to be shepherding over that. Um, the violation stuff, so aggregate is, again, not pointing fingers, we are county, we are at the mercy of of the state. Uh, agri is a goal five resource. It's it's protected the same way wildlife is, the same way cultural resources are.
Is it water protected also? I mean, sure, I, I gravel, I get it. We all need that for infrastructure and, you know, growing and everything, but drinking water is pretty darn important. And the only thing we want out of this, that was one of your questions, is not, is to have our water not be contaminated or a chance, at least, for it to return back to normal, even though it's been said many times, it could take decades for that to happen at this point. And the blaming of the drought, then we should be testing every single well in Creek County. Because isn't every single person in Creek County with a well possibly at risk for drinking these high levels of manganese and arsenic and aluminum if it's caused from the drought? Because the whole county is in a drought, it was, if that's the reasoning.
And public world, yeah, that would be fantastic. I understand there's a lot of groundwater concerns all across the state, probably all across the country, especially for private wells. Um, in a perfect world, yes, that would absolutely be the answer.
Should the county send out some kind of notification to everybody in Creek County that has a well saying, maybe, maybe you should have your water tested because we think it's from the drought?
Yeah, and I think many of the wells are tested. I think the majority of the water within Creek, within populated areas was is within the city of Prineville.
Tested for nitrates.
They have a extensive cert, uh, test on their water for different things and so.
Yeah, private wells are, you know, I think if you have a private well in the county or anywhere in the state, it it makes sense to get a test.
I think it's also super important to bring up the fact that we don't know what it is. We don't know if it's a drought, if it's, uh, Knife River, if it's something else. And that's what we've been fighting so hard to find out. And I I can't imagine how frustrated you must be that it's taking this long to figure that out. But and I know I sound like a broken record and I say it every time, but there's the the county doesn't have the scientists and the ability to test water, that that's a state regulated area, right? And so that's your state representatives, the DEQ, dogami. And I and I think we can all agree that we've been very aggressive pushing those people to get that done. But we are not their bosses, right? The governor is, who we've talked to, and I've talked to on numerous occasions. Um, our state representatives are the people that oversee their budgets. Our state senators are the people that oversee the rulemaking and all those things. Those are the people that are in charge of those state agencies that test the water, that can identify what the problem is. And until we identify what the problem is, and I think that's what John was talking about earlier is, then we don't have a leg to stand on when we go and say this COP, CUP is gone, right? Until we have something from the state, which we actually have things from the state that say the opposite of that there's no issues here. At least with the the aggregate, right? I mean, you've seen that.
Nope, I have not.
We we got that from the attorney that you guys hired.
Oh, yeah, that was to give him his initial response.
Yeah.
But then that's, um.
Not, not ours, not our attorneys, dogami.
No, no, but I'm saying we received that from your attorney, that that was the response that they received through through dogami, which is the state agency.
Pretty much funded by.
Fair, fair enough. Again, I I'm not here to say that that they are as pure as driven snow. That's not what I'm saying, but I'm saying that's who we rely on to get that information, to make a decision. And until we have that information that says something differently, and again, we've worked very hard with the EQ with the state to put a stay on future stuff because they say this is concerning. And again, I think if we weren't here battling constantly to get that, that probably would not have happened. And so, but we get to a point where we only have, pardon me, we only have so much ability to affect the state. I mean, let's go back to COVID when they required everybody wear masks and shut our restaurants down and all those things. And everybody came and jumped our asses. Rightfully so, we're the local, closest local officials, but we don't have control over DEQ.
Uh, H A or any of that.
All those different, uh, what was the one that would get people, uh? Well, the O L C C and the different groups, CDC and all these different people that make those decisions and affect those businesses. So I I and I understand your frustration and we are, I am equally as frustrated, well, probably not because I don't, my house isn't in there. But I I'm very frustrated also, but we have to get the right data to be able to move forward.
I think we work collectively together. We can't sit here and slam everyone and then expect them to jump too far. So I think it's important that we, you know, and I realize it's not good to turn on your faucet and have poor water. And I think we're trying desperately to help you out. And I think other agencies are involved and are working on it. And it's slow, I understand, everything is slow, but we are, we are consciously working on it. And are, and is the state.
Yeah, it it's a ton of progress, um, with this first sampling plan. Um, I told somebody that, you know, the news now, the screen is filled with water experts and scientists and everybody's looking at this. We get another round of data, they might be able to connect the dots. If they can, they have the express authority to do something very quickly. So, um, we're certainly not trying to point fingers, we're just trying to let you know that we need to stay in our lane, uh, for the sake of all the taxpayers in Creek County.
Do we have a date when the next round of testing is going to happen yet?
Um, what did Greg mention at the meeting yesterday? He mentioned next week, last time I talked to him, he said they were going to find out about funding soon. Uh, my understanding on funding is once they get it, they have to spend it very quickly. And so it should happen, I think, by the end of May is what I was told.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks.
Thanks, thanks, thank all of you, I feel your pain, I really do, I wish I could give you the right words, I really do. I wish I could snap my fingers.
Any more public comment?
We gotta hear from you, Adam. It wouldn't be a Wednesday if we didn't hear from you.
This will be the beginning of this.
And you've got your hat on. Yeah, I think you're the only cowboy hat in the audience.
Adam McColsky, Stan, think you got, you know, you know, my address. So I guess listening to this and it kind of goes back to, okay, we have a problem now, we're trying to work through. I would say the way things are said, that the county's not going to move and doesn't have a plan to move. But I'm also going to talk about, like I talked about before, is what are we going to do in the future? Because this is, these minds are going to come back up because I know where all the gravel is. I've talked to Knife River, there's other people just sitting in the background waiting to see what happens because they're going to move. So the future for us is in the county is what is the plan to get the right data on these hearings when people are putting in for permits to actually get the right kind of things in the CUP that have teeth in it, that actually protect the public if something happens? And I understand, I've been at the planning commission meetings, most people don't understand mining. I know one that did, uh, but most people don't. So if you don't and you're making those decisions, why don't hire somebody's, hire somebody that actually knows like a geologist, whatever, to maybe help the county in the process to provide these safeguards that can protect the citizens here rather than a billion dollar company that really doesn't care and just wants to make the money. And everybody wants to make money and go to Arizona in the winter and enjoy their lives. But that's, but everybody else that has to stay here and live with this, it's not that great for them. So anyway, I got to make that comment.
That's a very good suggestion.
If I take that one?
Sure.
Okay, I'm really glad you asked that, actually, it's a real good question. The first part is, is land use, the applicant brings their material, they're supposed to satisfy the applicable criteria. If they do, their application shall be approved. The court, the board of commissioners to act is basically the judge. And it's up to other interested parties to comment and say, no, what they're saying is wrong. We make the decision based on substantial evidence, it's not our job to prove anybody's case for it, that makes sense? Um, on the second part, you're absolutely right. Uh, again, not pointing fingers at the state, but our current county code, um, was put in place by the state through enforcement order quite a while ago because they didn't like, uh, we were rejecting too many aggregate applications. So they changed our code through enforcement order. Um, in the middle of the D L C last week, I brought that up. And, uh, it sounds like we can actually go back and maybe change that again. And so that's a very long process, but I think that's part of it. We're limited with what's in our code and I've never liked it. Um, it's it's too aggregate heavy. Um, and so that's something we're going to take a really hard look at, see if we can amend the code. And that's a very long process, a lot of public input, and we invite you to that process if we get there. So, um, that's a long range step, so this won't, we won't be coming back to situations like this in the future.
I don't have that much life left, so let's get moving. Anyway, that's it for now, unless I come up with something else at the end.
Part of your problem, though, Adam, is you have very valuable aggregate out there. And it's the worth that you're looking at out there is pretty high. And so there's going to be a very significant value or battle.
Oh, and I understand that, so let, let, let these billionaires buy all this property here and just dig. It's like drill, 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 dig, 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 but you got to pay for it.
That that's kind of the problem there is you have an extremely high value there of the quality of that.
Don't understand that. Thank you very much. I'm sure I'll be back at the end.
Thanks, Adam.
We'll miss you if you aren't.
Any other comment? Mister, come in, please.
Um, Mike Urban, Plano Highway, and I just got a couple of, a couple of real quick things. And first off, I'd like to address Commissioner Barney. And Brian, don't ever go out of town and leave Susie in charge again. Things kind of got out of control for a while last week, but but we managed okay. On a more serious note, I see, uh, Mandy is here to talk about the hub project and funding thereof. And I don't need to explain what that's all about to you folks, but I know it's a really good program and we should support that, uh, program as much as we can. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments? And I would, you know, specifically ask those that are online, that we've been getting hacked and having some problems. So we have kind of a little bit different system to where we kind of lock things down.
Do we know, do they raise their hand?
It's.
They are the fun parties can still raise their hands, we're thinking to have them chat me directly if they want.
Okay.
Which, if you don't know, part of what happened last week was we were hacked. And Sarah was very quick at pulling the plug. So that was part of the problem of last week also. I was chair for one time and everything happened on me. I was, it was kind of a, a very eventful week.
And it's not the first time, so.
No, we were, we were at least veterans at hacking, yes.
But it can get quite, quite bad, actually.
Yes.
So have you received any?
If you could just reiterate to my phone that if anyone else wants to make a comment.
So if anyone on Zoom wants to make a, uh, comment, please chat. Okay, thank you. Well, we will move on to the next, uh, consent agenda. Entertained a motion to, uh, pass a consent agenda, no changes?
So moved.
I second that.
Motion's been made, um, by Commissioner Crawford and seconded by Commissioner Hermick. And, uh, I, um, motion's been made second, any discussion?
Discussion?
No, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Hermick, aye.
Bernie, aye. So moved.
Hey, we didn't get hacked, okay.
So on to the next, first discussion is the hub project. Please come forward.
Good morning, my name's Dwayne Porter, I'm vice president of the Board of Directors for High Desert Christian Academy. I'm also a local business owner, volunteer, husband, father, grandfather. And I'm here to introduce this this morning, we were here a couple of months ago, talk to you, and I want to thank you for giving us the time again today to give you an update where we're at. I'm going to go a little bit off script this morning, which might scare my colleagues a little bit, but I feel called to do so. The hub is so much, but what it's about is about our kids. It's about our youth in Creek County, it's about our future, our next generation of leaders, innovators, scientists, teachers, doctors. It's about them. It's about a place where they can recreate, where they can learn, where they can be safe. It's about security, it's about safety. My wife, the last few weeks, has been a participant in our local citizens academy put on by the county sheriff's office. She shared with me some of the statistics about crime, drugs, sex offenders, issues in Creek County and even the state, state numbers and statistics have come out recently. And it's scary, it's very scary. What we're focused on and at the heart of this is a faith-based organization in High Desert Christian Academy. What this is about is about our kids and our future. Make no mistake about it, we're here today to ask for a financial partnership. And we'll get there, you'll hear from colleagues and partners, from where we're at, what we're doing, where we're going, what it looks like. Vision with action can change the world. Our kids can change the world. I think most everybody would agree, there's not a whole lot in our world today that everybody can agree on. But the last six to nine months, we have gotten a tremendous amount of commitment and support for this project, for the hub. It's one thing I've seen in the county that has brought a lot of different parts of the county, people, leaders like you, together, in a commitment. So I'm asking you today, as we work through this, again, make no mistake, we're asking now to take action. Take action for our kids, it will change the world. We have several people that are going to come up, we've partnered with some incredible esteemed folks to share where we're at, where we're going and what we need. I'd like to bring, uh, Mandy Puckett up to continue forward.
Thank you, Dwayne, I didn't know he was going to do that. I'm very moved. Okay, so I would like to introduce, um, myself and our partners that are here with us to speak to you today. So you already heard from Dwayne Porter, who's our vice president of HGCA's board. And then Kim Patterson, right here, is a board director with HGCA as well. She also is a mortgage officer, um, business here in town, new funding, new American funding. Um, I'm Mandy Puckett, I'm the High Desert Christian Academy Community Relations Director, so I write grants, um, oversee the alcohol drug prevention grant, the drug pre-community grant that the school got, um, in twenty twenty-three. And we make sure that we provide alcohol drug prevention activities, um, prevention activities at the school and outreach to Creek County as well. Um, Seth Anderson.
Here.
He is, um, principal and architect over Sage Architecture, he's been very involved with the hospital in past years and has, uh, contributed to the nonprofit and contributed his work, um, donated thousands of dollars to kind of getting repurposing and getting the hospital up to par, um, with us and with previous partners that were up there. Lindsay McGuire, um, is a project manager also with Sage Architecture. Steve Waring is the executive director of Creek County Parks and Recreation District. Andrea Weaver is in the back, um, she is over recreational programs, the program coordinator for Parks and Rec. And Steve Forster. A city manager with Prineville, um, all of them have been integral partners in this effort to transform the old hospital or Hospital Hill as some of them into an educational and community service hub. So thank you for your support. I want, I'm here basically for two purposes, one to kind of update you on the progress that we've made. We've made tremendous progress, uh, we've applied for lots of grants, um, local, state and federal. We're getting ready to apply for another, um, the board just approved another grant that's coming out next week um, for childcare expansion that the state is offering their second round of grants. And there's a thirty day turnaround, of course there is. So I will be back, um, to ask for your support. Um, but I will beg your pardon if I may have to kind of rush it. Um, one thing about grants is they're always, right now, right now, hurry, get this done. So, okay, so Sarah, I don't know if you can put the next slide up that has like the key items of what we're trying to do at the like a list of childcare dual enrollment. And the one right there, okay. So Kim Patterson, if you want to join me for this, we can share with you. Kim is the board director who oversees the grants, uh, with me at the school. So we've been working day and night.
Yes, we have.
And we can share with you some of the things we're trying to do at the campus. Do you want to take this one?
Sure. So what we're really excited about is, uh, we have already in place childcare and early education. Oh, thank you. Yeah. Okay, can everybody hear me? Okay, so we have childcare and early education well underway. We still have rooms we need to, uh, complete to extend that because as fast as we can get that done, we're filling up. It's a huge need in Prineville with childcare and early education. So that's a very big need. And we've been fulfilling it as fast as we can, but we're growing, so we need help with that. Um, we have, uh, K through twelve dual enrollment, we would like to progress with. We've explored dual enrollment where we can have different entities combining together. Um, not just with our Christian Academy, but with public and online school, uh, different ones, so, um, we have career and trades, we've talked about. Different people have looked at our space and we would love to have a career academies, different things that our students and our kids and our community can combine and learn and advance. It's, it, that's a tremendous opportunity for kids to grow and get into trades. We have gym ball fields, clubs, activities, that's our hopeful plan with the parks. We have a lot of good things in the works there. The transportation is to help get some of these kids that are not on campus to our campus for some of these events. So we have, excuse me, transportation, we've talked about as well. And then, of course, our community and prevention services, as Mandy mentioned, with the drug-free, um, grant that we've been working with and all of that that we do. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
So we've applied for two more federal grants, we did three federal grants last month alone, it was. Um, but they are in, they've been accepted, so we just now have to wait to see if we get them. If we do get them, we will see a lot of community services and preventative services funding coming into Creek County. So pray and keep your fingers crossed that we get those grants. Um, the childcare grant is coming up, we're going to apply for that one. We have put out, uh, letters of interest and requests for support from Kiwanis Rotary, all of our local civic foundations. So if you haven't seen it yet, you will. Um, we're just trying to get the federal grants and the state grants wrapped up because those have tight timelines. We're going to be making the rounds to present to as many local groups as we can. Um, in the community, we do have some mental health counselors here, um, and interested tenants that have approached the school. Uh, we've looked at the hospice building, there's so many cool ideas of what we can do. But the first thing that we need is the facility assessment. Um, we really can't say much to these tenants without that part being done. So we're really grateful that Seth and Lindsay are here and they're going to. We're really grateful that Seth and Lindsay are here and they're gonna answer your questions about kind of where the facility is currently at and where we need it to be in order to open our doors. And let some of these partners come in. Okay, Sarah, next slide is the map, the aerial map of the property. Okay, so you can see the map has changed a little bit since the Central Oregonian did. Did an article, so this just kind of shows you where, where some of the interest is really getting stronger. Is number one is the city of Prineville property and interest. So as you can see, number one there in the top corner is where the Prineville Police Department currently is. And I'll let Steve share more with you about Prineville's interest, I don't want to speak for him, but those are kind of areas that we've forecasted, nothing is set in stone yet, but. Interested and they want to expand to kind of account for the growth that we're experiencing here in Creek County. The Oregonian recently in December of 2024 reported Creek County is one of the fastest-growing counties in. The state of Oregon and we simply cannot keep up, we don't have enough resources or, or space to be able to serve the growth that we are currently experiencing. Number two is where the water systems are, three is the cross, that's where High Desert Christian Academy currently is, where the childcare is, where K through 12 currently is. We are already running out of space and need to expand as well. There's been some discussion about being able to move to four as we expand childcare and dual enrollment services at the school. Five A is the kind of top level of the buildings where the surgery center is, and. One kind of expands into the ER, it's on the north side, right where the, you see kind of the arrow in one. The city of Prineville is interested in having a training room there for public safety. In that area, I'll let Steve talk more about that. Five B is the basement, that's what Parks and Rec is interested in, and Steve and Andrea can share more with you about that. Six is the open field that we have there, several acres between the parking lot and Main Street, so that there's a lot of interest to have more ball fields. We are running out of space, as everyone knows that has a kid, for their kid to be able to practice. There's also interest for a gymnasium that the school would obviously have own, but it would be rentable by Parks and Rec to the public to use. Just like they use all their other limited spaces in Creek County. Seven is the old hospice building, that could be multipurpose, there's lots of ideas, everything from trade school, dormitories to workforce housing. Administrative offices, mental health counselor space, and the great thing about that is that's a separate tax lot, so we could eventually sell that off if there was someone interested. And it allows it to be detached from the school, so some of the concerns that come up from parents is if there's gonna be, let's say, mental health counseling. For the public there, they don't have to go into the school in any way to be able to access those services, so that's the nice feature about, about seven. And it's almost three acres of property there, bridge, building, and then all the arrows is just possible, you know, entrances to the property that we are trying to explore. All of the things that Sage Architecture is gonna help us with if we can get funding for that assessment. Okay, Sarah, next slide, does anyone have any questions about the map before I move on? Alright, so next up is Seth Anderson and Lindsay McGuire from Sage Architecture.
Hi Commissioners, Seth Anderson with Sage Architecture, pleased to be with you today and to support this great. Community endeavor, our firm is very dedicated to our communities, we're based in Bend, we are. Education and childcare experts as part of what we do, and really believe strongly in the community aspect of this project. As Mandy said, I've been involved with this from back when Lutheran Community Services was looking at it. We studied the building and then we most recently helped the school with the remodel to get the school into the space. It is a hospital, and so it comes with some challenges in terms of the types of uses that we're looking at putting in this facility, and that's where we come in. To help analyze the space and make sure that we are doing things that are safe, that things are orderly, and that we are reducing costs through the long term, so that's what the request is for, to help. Fund that study, and that's where we would help the agencies that are interested in the spaces determine where they need to be.
Yeah, I agree with all of that, and you know, we have been working with Mandy closely to put a proposal together. To just kind of define the scope of what would best support the hub in these kind of early, early days. So like Seth said, doing a facilities assessment, making sure that all the intended uses meet code. Because we would be changing from, you know, hospital medical uses to some recreation uses, assembly uses, so there are some implications to that, and we want to make sure we kind of go in clear-eyed. In addition, we'd like to kind of look at the campus from the 30,000-foot view and what it could become. Help the hub kind of have a framework that supports their growth, not only on day one, but you know. Year 10, you know, that we're, we're making moves that can help them along that whole process, so.
Yeah, so we're very excited about this, as Mandy said, we've been financial supporters of the school as well and. Really believe in the, in the mission of this community center, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I provided in the funding request, this, this slide is mine. In the funding request, I provided you two quotes that we got from S A J, one was to do the whole campus at once. And then the second quote was to do it if we had to do it in phases, in smaller chunks. So as you can see, it's more costly if we do it in phases, and we run the potential of having to redo work we've already done. If that makes sense, because when we have tenants approach us, we don't know what building or which space they're gonna occupy, so I really. We're trying really hard to do, do it at once, we think it would save us money for one, it would save us the risk of having to repeat the work. If somebody, say a tenant moved into one area, then they. Another, so that would be our preference, we have written this into several grant proposals. And the feedback that I'm getting is, where's the county, where's the city, where's this, like, we want to see the financial skin in the game, so. I'm in that funny chicken egg place right now, where we're trying to figure out what can people contribute to the project. Because no grant funder will fund 100% of the project, they will fund percentages of it. And they will fund different things, so some will fund staff, some won't, some will fund the assessment, some won't. So really, it's dependent on who you're talking to, so all's I know is, this is what we need to kind of get going, is phase one, which is the budget that you see in your packet. And with that, you can go to the next slide, Sarah. That is just a reminder of what is currently being forecasted in our strategic plan for moving the hub forward. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve Waring and Andrea Weaver, so they can share with you the Parks and Rec's perspective.
Morning Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yep.
A few months ago, Mandy reached out to me to invite us to come take a look at the basement, and Andrea and I went to look primarily to identify some additional storage space, because we're just completely out of storage. Santa's Workshop every year has multiple crafts that the kids in the community do. We don't have any space to put those crafts together for them, so Andrea and I went to go look to see if this space would work for that. And as we were walking through, Andrea's creative juices got flowing, and then all of ours got going, and we all started talking about what are some of the other. Uses for this basement, and you would probably think, how can a basement work with Parks and Recreation? And Sarah, if you could go to the next slide, I believe that it's on here, so. As we look at our Unified Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was done with the city and the county back in 2021, it does identify in there. A need for additional indoor space, so that we have, the spaces that we have right now are completely at capacity for those prime times when. People are recreating, so the Ochica Gymnasium and the Juniper Art Guild, which are not really large spaces for this community. They're pretty much full with, with what we can offer right now, so as we walk through this basement area, you can identify multiple classroom spaces. Plenty of storage in there, they, they actually have cages that were built in there that were, I believe, for storage of medical records. But we believe we can repurpose those spaces and turn them into indoor batting cages, and we feel like, just with the lack of things to do in the community for. Kids and especially teenagers, this could be a really good amenity in town and entertainment. Just someplace that kids can go and, and practice their baseball, or just go for fun, baseball and softball. There's space for a team room where we can set up TVs and have some e-sporting games in there. Space for us to do our martial arts classes, our gymnastics classes, more health and wellness classes for the community through. Exercising, zumba, those types of things, so plenty of opportunity in this basement that can be repurposed for more of a recreation-type space. We have provided as a Parks and Recreation District and as the foundation for Parks and Recreation, letters of support to Mandy and to High Desert Christian Academy, showing that. If the building was move-in-ready, it is a viable option for us to be able to use it for recreation space. And as it says on here, education rec program expansion, I just talked about that, lots of opportunity. We believe that this space could really hold a lot more and be right in the center of town for people to be able to come. Within walking distance for a lot of people to be able to come and utilize that recreation, there's also a nice big open field that, there's just not enough rectangular field space here. The school district holds most of the rectangular field space in the community, so this gives us another opportunity for that. And then, you know, we would be able to run it, I believe, through, like we have with, with the county and with the city. Through maintenance operation partnerships, so we do believe it's a viable option, we really hope that the, the basement could become move-in-ready and that this study can be done. And I couldn't agree with Dwayne's opening statements more, there's an old saying in this industry, that if you don't build parks, you build jails. Because you have to have things for the kids to do in the community, so this is a really great opportunity and we'd like to see how this continues to, to progress.
I'm Andrea Weaver, I would just add to what Steve said and just the educational opportunities and partnerships with HGCA to offer. Classes or PE or after-school options for some of those kids that are in daycare, even like. Date night classes for parents, knowing that there's childcare upstairs, whether that's a Saturday or anything, any day of the week, so there's so many recreational opportunities. And again, like Steve mentioned, just being in the heart of our district, we're a special district, so we're not part of the city, we're not part, we are not part of the county, we have our own district boundary lines. And so to really maintain a space that is within those boundary lines is really important. I think to me, and I think it's important to those patrons who pay their tax dollars and to help us. Offer these programs, so I think that this is a really great opportunity for us to kind of partner with them, and it's outside of the box, it's kind of a parks and. A private Christian school, which I think is really awesome, and I think just kind of speaks to the people of Creek County, that's kind of just what we do, we kind of think outside the box and. We work with the partners that we have here in town to just make everything better, mainly for the kids, so this is a, a great need, thank you.
Thank you very much, I did want to invite Genevieve and Monty, if you guys are here to come up, they are two counselors, mental health counselors that recently toured, we toured in the building. We went kind of all over and they were visionaries too, so they're gonna share with you kind of their interest.
Thank you. Yeah, we have a small counseling practice here in town and I actually worked at Lutheran up there a few years ago when they had it, and. I just think it's a, it's a largely untapped resource for the community. So much potential, so many options, and we're really thinking about office space, but kind of aligning with. Mission of this agency and, and with the community and kind of being around people with like minds and. Yeah, just trying to be a part of something really good.
One other thing was, Monty has offered parenting classes, and we thought about partnering with Parks and Rec to be able to. Offer some of that to the community as well, as, as an additional service, otherwise we're private practice, and so just interested really in being close with the community and building bridges. Alright, you didn't think you'd hear from so many people, did you? Okay, Steve, are you gonna join me? Do you want this slide or do you want the back?
No, I, I think we're fine, so Steve Forster, City Manager for Prineville, Oregon. Just to reinforce what Mandy and her team are talking about today. We've been working with this organization for quite a while, looking at different opportunities to enhance. What this could offer our community in terms of helping our kids, trade schools. And also the fact that we have our police department up there, our police department has lots of room to grow in the building. We do have some limitations on parking area. If we were to expand that as the community grows, we would need to be looking at acquiring property on the other side of the street, either Elm or. On Loper, so that's not a very good option for us, so we've been working with. The High Desert Team to see if there's an opportunity for the city to expand the parking lot, which is the number one you saw on the map. When we went through that process, we also looked at the old lab area, which is on Elm Street, as a potential area for us to expand into with a meeting room or a training room or something of that nature. So there's a synergy there from the aspect of the footprint of ED being there now. There's also a lot of synergy about what that means to the school in terms of security and having the police department there as good partners. We want to be careful on that interface between having some bad guys up there and that interface with the children, but there's ways to mitigate that. There's also the upside of introducing children to our, our men and women in public safety, both on the police side and obviously. With the tight connection with the county sheriff's department too, which we interact with, as you guys well know, all the time. So from the council's perspective, which I cannot speak for, there seems to be an interest, in my opinion, from the county to support. What the vision is for this old hospital property, and so we anticipate, Mandy and I have been working together to have a similar. Presentation for our council with a similar ask to participate in, getting them set up with the assessment so they can continue to expand and offer. The value of this infrastructure to other organizations.
Hey Steve?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a ballpark of what, what you guys are thinking of doing?
In terms of.
A donation?
I, I do not, again, Seth, you know, I kind of. Counsel, so I, I don't think, I, I would share, I don't know that the council would be necessarily interested in all of it, so I think. As we have done in the past, I think it's a great opportunity for the city and the county to kind of partner on. You guys decide to do here today, I think will be very influential on, on where the city's going to land as well, so. I wish I could give you a better answer, Seth, but that doesn't.
And I was looking through everything, is there a specific amount you're asking for, just, just to get my mind wrapped around it? I've looked kind of through everything and I didn't see.
The budget is near the end, Seth.
I saw a budget, but it's a lot of money. And that's a lot of money for, for Central Oregon County, so, but I mean, obviously, this is important to the community, and personally, I, I think it's something we want to help out with. But obviously, we have financial constraints.
Go back one, Sarah.
Like I saw a thousand dollars up there, is that what you're looking for?
That's where we're picking at.
You probably do half that.
Okay, so these next two slides, this is the, no, you can just stay right here with me, Steve, because you.
I'm Steve.
I got a meeting.
Okay, so these are the three priority needs that we have of funding, so in order to move forward, so. The facility and property assessment is 115,000 plus, and that's to do the full 12 to 13 acres of property, all the buildings. Again, if you have any questions, Seth really is the best person to ask, but with that will be the occupy permits, the building codes. All of that depends on the tenants that want to come in, so it's a little chicken egg for us, if you will. So the facility assessment has to be done in order for tenants to be able to occupy. See what's wrong with the building, if there is anything that needs to be updated, that, I have some grant funders who are very interested, but they're watching to see what the city and county are gonna do. That offer some remodeling and construction grants. The second thing we need is to remodel some of our childcare rooms, as Kim had mentioned, we're already at capacity, and we have space, but we have to remodel those rooms, make sure they're up to par with childcare. You know, the division, like hot water, little things like, room's ready to go, but you don't have hot water for the young ones, there's all of these crazy, these rules that we. There's all of these crazy, these rules that we have to follow to be up to par. So we estimate about forty thousand dollars um will allow us to remodel some of the additional rooms. Um, there's two that are very close. We're just a few thousand dollars away from getting those two open. Um, in order to accommodate more families and children, though, we really could use that money to get more rooms going. And then the hub project coordination. Right now, we are basing everything on volunteers and alcohol and drug prevention money contribution to this project. So you're looking at the people that are all working together to try to get this done. So we really could use a formal staff to be able to get this project really moving forward. And we are also um finalizing a formal hub committee meeting. So invitations have gone out about that to get our committee taking minutes, you know, tracking where all the money is going and doing everything we can. So those are our top three needs. The next slide, Sarah, is the budget of what's been contributed so far. So we've over, we already have, you see in the gray column, that is our ask, uh what's we're forecasting coming up. And the second column is what we've already received and matched. So we're in discussions with the city right now on the parking lot. And so we forecasted um some lease money for them to change the parking up there. We do have quite a bottleneck and it's in a residential neighborhood of parents coming into the school and they have to go out the same exit. And then it's it's causing some problems with parking for police department staff, public that come up there. So I'm really thankful to the city that they want to move in this direction because it will make things all around safer, traffic safety wise as well. Um, that contribution there on the hub project coordination comes from other grants um to contribute to this work. It's just simply not enough for the mountain of work there is to do. Equipment and supplies, the owner has given us all the equipment, furniture, supplies in the building to use for our partners, for the school. So it's thousands of dollars in supplies and equipment that's been donated to the project. We have a lot of volunteer hours being put into it, and then, of course, the police department. So you can see, we've already been able to overmatch our request of what we're asking for. And then, as you see in years two through nine, we simply don't know those numbers yet because we need to get the facility assessment done to know what we're looking at for remodel costs and construction costs. So once we get the assessment done, we'll be able to get some contractor bids in to tell us what we're looking at. So then we will come back to the city and the county, keep you in the loop every step of the way, and then start going for more grant funding when we have some more solid numbers on what we're looking at for construction remodel costs. Did I miss anything, Dwayne? Kim? Maggie? No? Okay, any any other questions on the budget?
I don't have any questions. I guess one of my questions is Park and Rec. You have a lot of interest in this project. Have you figured out how you would possibly fund doing these improvements? I mean, what is your your take on going in there and putting in fields in that? Are you looking at a tax levy? I mean, what are you thinking as far as your budget?
Well, um, I think we've seen as a community, tax levies and bonds are not very popular right now, so that would be probably.
What is your future projection, how you would be handling this?
We believe that this program, that these programs that we run in there could, through a cost recovery model, almost pay for pay for themselves and for the lease um monthly payment that we would have. And we're currently working on all of our business models. We we write out goals, objectives, um what kind of resources do you need? We look at all of that before we start any new program. And so this would kind of be a pay-for-play um facility. And that's just the reality of the Parks and Recreation industry now. You know, there are some things that are subsidized, those are more playgrounds, open spaces, trails. But when you get into more specialized recreation, there is, there usually are fee-based for those. So that's the type of models that we're looking at. There's also S D C fees. And S D C fees can you can be used um kind of in a collaborative way with county, city and Parks and Recreation District for park-type projects. So there's some money there that we believe could be prioritized for materials, equipment that we need. But the the money that it takes to um to put up front to get a study done, it it just doesn't seem like it's the highest and best use of those dollars when there's so many deferred maintenance projects within the community. And um, you know, we're talking about a possible new facility down the road too. So we're just trying to juggle all of that and and we we offer all the support we can, but it is very tight. And so when we talk about poor, um, you know, in in central Oregon, poorer communities are are not as financially wealthy as others. You know, we're we are at a seventy-five cent per thousand dollar assessed value and it doesn't move. It's it's just locked in at that. So the next couple of years of maintenance operation are really tight until some of these exemptions start coming to an end up at the hill. But we're really looking at any model we can to um be able to support this program.
Okay, okay.
Anything else? I, yeah, and and from my standpoint, I don't think I can give you an answer right today. I think that we have to talk with our finance department. We have to see what's available. I know things are tight, we're going into budgets. So before I would make a commitment, I would want to to at least have a conversation with our finance department.
Absolutely, Commissioner Barney, and that's, I don't think our expectation today. We wanted to update where we're at, where we're going um and what our ask, what our need is. And again, I don't know if we have any expectation of decision today, but we wanted to get it out to you and where we're at. I was up at the at the school, or should I say the old hospital, a couple of weeks ago, doing some filming for promotion for for this. And there's a plaque um up there in the entry area for Pioneer Memorial Hospital that says, "A Building for the Community Today and Into the Future." And this is potentially the future of of Old Hospital Hill and and being able to serve the community for our kids. So again, I don't, we're not asking for a decision today, we're asking you to consider and know where we're at.
And and I agree with Commissioner Barney because right now we're asking our departments to cut and we need to take a really serious look at all of our, you know, budget and everything there because it is tight. And so I do agree with him that we do need to go back to our finance department and take a look. And and I do admire your vision and I wish I wish we could write checks every day, but we need to look and and I really do thank you for your presentation and I do admire your dream and and we need to take, like I say, a really hard look, but thank you.
Yeah, I I completely agree. Uh, I think there's families in this room and all over the community that helped build that hospital. And we need to make sure that we find ways for that to move into the future and be important, but we, dollars and cents, so we got to make sure we're taking care of our employees and moving forward first. But I I'm I'm sure we can look and I think we should go find something.
I think you have three partners in here, Park and Rec and the city and the county, and I think we're all on the same page, so we'll figure it out.
It was an asset nineteen fifty-four when it was built and when I was born in that hospital. And I spent like seventeen.
That was like nineteen seventy when you were born.
Yes, right, yeah.
Oh, Steve, you're.
There's a lot of, a lot of history even in with that facility in Bendville, Grok County.
Again, thank you for allowing us to be here.
Now, thank you for a very, very good presentation and thank you for your childcare efforts. I know we really do need that in Primeville.
Two minutes for the restroom?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're going to say we're taking a little break?
Yeah, we're going to have a three-minute break. Hey, we're ready to start again. Anyone else take a seat? Next would be, consider the recommendations uh to the compensation committee.
I think we don't have Will.
Where's Will?
Will is.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we aren't starting.
We're not ready yet.
Here comes Will. Hurry, Mike.
Hey, sir, Will.
Morning Commissioners, um, the item on the agenda today regarding the elected what is it, elected officials compensation committee. I wanted to um update you on the uh recommendation from from the compensation committee um and outline some options for the board uh in moving forward. So just quickly, uh, the compensation committee met on both March sixth and March thirteenth to consider the applications um for the third member of the committee so they can make a recommendation to the board on appointment. After hearing public comment on March thirteenth, um, the committee reviewed the applicants and recommended that Blaine Nolan be appointed to um that third um committee member um spot. So um I've um I've included with that with that last minute memo that I was um finally able to provide this morning, I I included a copy of the minutes from that March thirteenth uh meeting for you to review the board's um decision-making process. Um, but as I noted, uh, the board recommended um Blaine Nolan to fill that position. At this point, I believe the board has three options uh in moving forward. You can accept the committee's recommendation um and appoint uh Mr. Nolan to that third spot. Uh, you can consider uh the other applicant and or reopen recruitment. Or a third option would be um to consider restructuring the committee to be comprised of the citizen members of the budget committee. My understanding is that this is um, this is how other counties have structured uh their compensation committees or some other counties have structured their compensation committees. This is something I was going to suggest we move toward for next year. I believe um, I believe that there are some real benefits to doing so. One is efficiency, administrative kind of efficiency in terms of uh staff time and in in, you know, every year appointing somebody to that to that board. Uh, it also ensures that um the members of that compensation committee have a good picture of our um the county's whole budget as well as um for those elected officials that oversee departments. They also have a better understanding of those those departments and the responsibilities that those elected officials carry um in their roles as apartment heads of those of those departments. I I bring this up because I I have heard there was some concern just kind of process-wise regarding the the compensation committee's recommendation. I I want to make it clear, it has nothing to do with who was or was not appointed to or recommended to be appointed to that. It was just the concerns were more process-oriented. So I wanted to bring that third option up um this morning uh for the board's consideration because um, you know, in terms of the budget calendar, the timing we need have to make these decisions. We we should still have time to make that switch um now uh instead of next year as I was was going to propose. But um I do, from from my perspective, I think using the citizen members of the budget committee as the compensation committee kind of helps ensure better alignment between fiscal priorities, uh fiscal policies. As I mentioned, reduces some of the administrative burden, uh improves continuity and institutional knowledge kind of in terms of who's making those decisions and also ensures consistency with decision-making. So um I I I would recommend that you make that change now and that we move forward with that change. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Um, I I do believe um under O R S two oh four one one two, um, which governs compensation committees. I I don't see any any red flags. I do think um Eric and I uh discussed this morning um one potential concern that I think the board should be aware of, uh, and it relates to um existing members on a committee whose terms have not expired. Um, there is some limited risk and maybe Eric, you could you could explain that.
I I might have a really good solution for that. Uh, what if we were to, it says in here, you could have five members on a board? What if we were to just move the two members onto that? We could see if a five-member board worked. And then it, we could, as the the timeline goes through and people's times are because I think it's disrespectful to board members to just change systems without talking with them, without working with them. And so if we could add the three to the two, because one of them's already on there, then we would have a five-member board. And if that works, great. If it, if it, if we've seemed like it's too clunky, then we can move to back to a three-member board and make that three-member board the the people that are part of the uh citizen part of the of the budget committee, because I think at that point you kind of get best of both worlds.
Yeah, but at this point, though, one of the board members is already on the budget committee and the other one is on the compensation committee and we haven't, we haven't uh accepted the recommendation to move three across. So if if we do this, I would um would just move who is existing on that committee into the budget committee. So that would be the one person that's on there because the other one is vacant and hasn't been filled.
That that's fair, but then you're going to have to go out for a fifth position because you don't have four. You don't have, you you wouldn't want to have a a committee of four people. I guess we can.
It it's still.
It's going to be weird if we end up with a. Going to be weird if we end up with two and two.
It's still seven, though. I mean, it's because the court or the commissioners are also involved in the committee.
No, we wouldn't be part of our own compensation.
No, not on compensation, but on.
For the budget committee.
Eric, you want to address that?
Yeah, so the budget committee is composed of, I guess, lack but were two groups. One of them is you three commissioners, and then there are the three citizen committees. As I understand it, the discussion is whether to take those three citizen members of the budget committee, not you three, but those three, and put them into the compensation committee. At least that's what I think I heard from you, Seth.
Yeah, and so you would, go ahead.
Yeah, so what that would mean is, as I understand it, Mr. Anderson is on both.
Correct.
Rhonda is on the compensation committee, so she would stay. And then there are two other citizen members of the budget committee that would be added to the compensation committee. So your compensation committee by statute can be the three members, five members, or anything in between. So you could have a four member compensation committee.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. I mean, I think it gets a little squirrely if we have a tie, but.
I do, I do, I do not agree with appointing the one that is recommended for today. I do not, I had a lot of people ask me to watch this meeting that was on the thirteenth, and I do not agree that the way it went. And so I agree with Brian. I am fine with Rhonda going over, but that is all I would agree on. I would not have voted, I would not have voted for authorization for, and and this is not personal at all. It is again, a process, and I did not agree with the process.
Sure. I just think it'd be disrespectful to have somebody that's a current member just.
Oh, I and I totally, I'm totally fine with that. Seth, I'm totally fine with that. This was a process, and I did not agree with the process. And again, I have no problem with doing that, but I'm not going any farther than that. And so I do agree that we do that, and that's an agreement, and I will go with that motion, but I will not go any farther.
Yeah, no, I I agree. I, you know, I appreciate everybody that applied.
Yes.
You know, for for this position and and Blayland and and Monte and but I wasn't real pleased with with that process. And so in all good conscience, I I couldn't move anybody forward either. So this is an alternate path to take. I think it's a great path because I am very much for the budget committee being involved in the compensation. Because I, you know, just for the many reasons that Will discussed, I think that they have more communication with the county throughout the year, especially on at least a quarterly basis. They're aware of what the budgets are. They hope go through that. They meet all the personnel, whether it's the elected officials, which is the ones that are under the compensation committee. You know, and and there are eight of them. It's just not the three county commissioners. It's the assessor, clerk, DA, treasurer, sheriff, and the three commissioners. So I feel that that is a better process, much more open, and would agree to that.
And I I agree. Like I say, I agree on your third choice, and I'm totally fine with Seth's suggestion. So do we need to make a motion to that effect?
I would recognize that, yeah.
Okay.
So just to make sure that we all understand what's being proposed, the compensation committee for this year would be reconstituted, and the membership would include Mr. Anderson, Ms. Neva, and the two other citizen members of the county budget committee. I'm afraid I don't know their names. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And and that's Scott Tibbs and Stephen Brown.
Yes.
And the what I think I heard, and I don't think this has to be part of the motion, but I think I heard there'll be an examination of how this process worked this year, so that maybe next year we see if we want to continue with the same process or tinker with it some more. Is that correct?
I I've I don't I don't believe so. I think this is this is the route that's been kind of discussed previously, and it's what we wanted to incorporate. I think we're just doing it a year earlier than, you know, what's been discussed. And under the circumstances, I think it's a great time to do it. And I I don't know the, you know, two oh four one one two. But I do understand that it has to be a compensation committee, and there has to be a budget committee. I don't know if those can be served as in one dual purpose under the statute, or whether they have to be each each, you know, a compensation committee and a budget committee, or can the budget committee, can the compensation be consumed within the budget committee? So I, you know, to try to make it as simple as we can. And I think it's good when we get rid of committees because, you know, they're I like the public input and all of that, but we get so many of them scattered around and in the process and time and things. I think that's a great way.
Yeah, interesting question. I don't know if there's a means by which you can do away with the compensation committee and just say it's the budget committee's responsibility.
Yeah, I don't think anybody is talking about. Are you talking about that, Brian?
Yeah, I, well, I'm saying not getting rid of the compensation committee, but I'm it's it's a function that would be under the budget committee.
It would be. It's a separate function.
It would be a separate function.
They serve those members of the the citizen, the citizen, citizen members of the budget committee would serve in the compensation committee capacity. So they would be serving that separate function. But they have a statutory requirement. I mean, the county has a statutory requirement to have a compensation committee. So they would be serving in that separate separate capacity. But as I mentioned before, they'd bring with them that institutional knowledge of the county's budget, of the departments that are at issue in that review. So they would bring that that extra experience and knowledge to the to the conversation.
Yeah, no, I I realize that. I'm just was trying to slimline it to where there could be under one one entity that could did both jobs.
Yeah, and I think the board has the authority to appoint whoever to the compensation committee. And in this case, you'd just be appointing the same same members from the citizen committee, and in this case, one additional member.
Correct. Okay.
All right.
Bear on it.
And make a motion to point. I don't know, is it a point or transition the board from the current situation to a situation of the three community board members plus the existing member of the compensation committee? Is that clear enough?
Yeah, I don't know if there has to be any magic words for what you're trying to achieve. I mean, whether that is reconstitute the current board, whether that is simply to appoint, I I think we won't necessarily need to say one or the other. So what I think I heard is that the the motion would be to appoint to the current year's Creek County elected official compensation committee, the members Rhonda Snava, William Anderson, and I'm sorry, the other two gentlemen.
Scott Tibbs and Stephen Brown.
Is that the motion?
So moved.
And Seth was making the motion. I'll I'll second whatever. So I'm not the motion maker. So I'll, is that the motion then?
I moved it.
Okay, so I seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Hermrich, aye.
Barney, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you. I just to to wrap this up, I might recommend I bring back to the board at some point in the in the future kind of a clear policy so that we can adopt this formally going forward as far as the compensation committee for future future years.
Which would be great. That would be good. And then we just have this, and it's cleaner and nicer and yes.
Thank you.
Managers report, huh?
Yep. All right, I'm still here. So managers report. The only thing I have for you this morning is and asks for some clarity on last week's motion regarding Justin Alderman and the Primeville reviews fee waiver request. My understanding of the motion, and there were, it kind of started and stopped a couple of times. I may have misunderstood it, but but my understanding was we were discussing the fee waiver request from the November twenty fifth request. That was discussed subsequently by the board on both December fourth and December eighteenth of twenty twenty four. And then that same fee waiver request was what was discussed with Todd Albert, the the public records advocate. So I responded to that fee waiver request last week. There is still a pending fee waiver request for a December thirty first request from the Primeville review on a related matter related to INRAC. And so what I what I'm hoping to get some clarity from the board on here this morning is whether that motion included me addressing that request as well. And I guess if not, is there is there a desire by the board to have me respond to that request as well? So.
I mean, personally, I think we should just give that request fee rate fee waiver as well and just move on. And then, like we talked about the last one, come up with a process and procedure that we're going to do from here on out, and then we will have a more clarity, which the conversations I've had with you that most of these fee waivers, if we look at best practices, would probably be passed over anyways within reason.
Yeah, I I don't know if I would, I would say say most, but I would say that I do believe it was a good exercise for me last week to go through that request with the bigger picture in terms of adopting a a policy or modifying the existing policy. It was a good exercise, and I I do think there's an opportunity to put together you know, some clear factors for those folks making decisions on fee waivers. That'll be helpful in in the case of requests from Mr. Alderman, but, you know, anybody in the public, other press members, public members. So I do think there's an opportunity to streamline our process.
I think we need to, I think we need to work on that and get that developed as soon as possible. And I agree with Seth. Let's let's just close the book. Let's get that done. And let's move forward and get that developed and get that in the books and look to the future.
So you is the ask to extend that authorization to the December?
Yes.
Twelfth one.
Yes, and I, yes, and I make the motion to authorize you to make the decision on that, Will. And Seth, if you would.
Second.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Hermrich, aye.
Barney, aye.
Crawford, aye.
And then, like I say, do you want a motion or just direction that we go ahead and we make a basically a formal
Policy.
Policy on that. Okay, and I would like, I'd like to have that as soon as we can and put that into our policy. Okay.
Anything else?
That's it this morning. Thank you.
We have this this letter.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I have it in front of me, so I'm thinking you want us to kind of will motion on it.
I saw there was an email from National Association of Counties towards the end of last week, called to action on the secure rural rural funds. Or, yeah, SRS funds. And so I, with Sarah's help, drafted a letter of support from the from the full board. If you guys are in agreement with the contents of that letter, I I think it's a worthwhile cause to support because it's important funding for for Creek County.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I actually talked to Merkley's assistant yesterday, and I kind of put in a little hey, we need our SRS funds thing, and he was going to talk to Merkley about it. So yes, I already put a little
I think another one to reach out to, and I don't think we need a letter for for this, but I think we could individually do it, is to to reach out to NACO, National Association of Counties. I've heard from Congressman Benson's office that they have not been as they're, they're starting to ramp it up a little bit, but they have not been aggress as aggressive as they have been in the past. And that's a group that has access to counties all across the Western United States, as well as the southern states that have some timberlands that that have the clout to be able to get all those people to call their individual congressmen and women, because that is, that's where I think that's where we're stuck at this point. I think the Senate, it has passed, and they're waiting for funding in the Congress. So I I think across the board, we should do the letter, but I think each one of us individually should call NACO and and talk to them and say, this is extremely important. Please get like minded counties to call their congressmen.
Seth is very right in that because in the NACO Public Lands Meeting on Thursday that I was attending, they were talking about really the West were very unified, but it's our eastern representatives that are kind of lagging behind. So if there was some way, so actually, if we could send that, and Sarah, I could give you the contact to NACO, it's the east coast that is falling behind, and we need to really try to hit them. And actually, I asked, they were kind of asking for personal. So I did contact the Creek County School Board and kind of said, hey, would you kind of tell me what programs you're maybe going to lack if you don't get any SRS? And Joel was supposed to get back to me, and I was going to ask Brad about road. So we may actually even craft a secondary letter that'll come back next week that we may be sending to do that. But Seth is very, very right. It isn't really us as much as the eastern, the eastern part of the United States that is falling behind, and we need to hit, we need to hit. So you are exactly right on that. So do we need, we need a motion to send the SRS letter to Congressman Vance, Wyden, and Merkley? I make the motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to address a letter to Ben, Senator Wyden, and Senator Merkley.
In support of SRS funding. I should have probably added that, sorry.
All, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Hermrich, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Okay.
For my commissioner's report, I wanted to talk about National Sunshine Week. I don't know if you guys know about.
Well, we need sunshine.
Well, this is a certain kind of sunshine that shines light on government. And what it does is it celebrates the Freedom of Information Act, allowing the public to access public records and meetings, and we've been talking about a lot that a lot lately. So part of that, I wanted to highlight Sarah and how great she does getting the meetings up on Zoom and YouTube, positive, not negative. You get that done very consistently, and I think we should look into as best practices requesting that all of our committees do that, that they record their meetings on Zoom as well as get that up in two or three days. There's very little cost to that. We're going to release the information anyways. And I think it's something we could do as a as a as a county to really show the public that we want to make sure that that information gets out as soon as possible. What are you guys' thoughts on that?
A lot of it is just people that are computer illiterate like me, so I'm glad we have Sarah because I couldn't do it. I know that. But yeah, maybe we need to get you a little sunray hat.
So I, are you guys comfortable with us moving forward with that? And again, it's not like it's has to be done, but best practices sure that it's three to four days. So I'd make a motion to from now on have best practices for all our committees and commissioner meetings, which we already do very well because of Sarah, to upload Zoom meetings to YouTube within three to four days.
Who are we going to put in charge of that?
I think we would work with each individual person, but I think that's a big part of what we're working on with the the, I mean, there's a plethora of these things of the
I think we need to identify first.
Yeah, I'm totally in favor of all this, but I see the responsibility coming on somebody. And I want to make sure that that somebody is able to handle.
Yeah, I don't want Sarah to have to do it for everyone because that's, I want to be very clear about that.
We need, yeah, we need to identify which committees we're talking about and who are we over and do. We need, yeah, we need to identify which committees we're talking about and who are we over and do they have the capabilities? That's.
I totally agree.
And our community, and our committee members are all private individuals that give up their time to, to participate in anything.
For each one, but, and if there isn't, we, I think we need to identify one. So maybe, maybe we start with that step that will identify all of our boards and committees and we'll find a staff person in the in-game of having a best practices. That would be to release recorded meetings within two to three days, three to four days of that meeting. So yeah.
Just kind of get it in place before we make them do it.
Crawford, can I verify that it's just YouTube or like, say for instance, the planning commission uploads the audio immediately of our meetings?
Do you not do video of the meetings?
There's Zoom video of the meetings, but just the audio is uploaded immediately. I don't think the, the video is not uploaded to YouTube.
So that's kind of my point is I think that we could start uploading that audio and video right away. And figure out, I mean, again.
Let's try to see if video, if audio would.
I would prefer both if it did. I mean, I think Sarah obviously is able to figure that out and.
It's not a technical thing. I think there are other concerns in that, but yeah.
We just need to make it a goal. Let's make it a goal when we try to get.
Perfect. I'll do, I'll go with the goal.
Okay. And then we'll work on it. Okay.
Great.
Okay. And then I had my grasshopper meeting. It was very well attended. And my grasshopper fact for all of you, I know more about grasshoppers than I ever wanted to know is in night, they'd been tracking grasshoppers since 1953. And in 1979, there were so many grasshoppers in Jordan Valley. And they had eaten everything that they started eating the paint off the buildings. And the paint on the buildings had lead in it and it didn't even faze the grasshoppers. So that is your grasshopper fact of today. There you go.
What about the birds that ate the grasshoppers?
I don't know about the birds. I was just amazed that they could eat the paint off the buildings. And that, and the two guys that came from the Department of Agriculture were amazing. They did a wonderful presentation and we all got together and it was, it was just excellent. And now we're going to have an additional meeting and we are going to try to eradicate grasshoppers in the eastern part of Crook County. It was a really, really good, good meeting. And so like I say, that was my one fact I want to spread out that they even ate the paint. And in one of the areas, and I'm not exactly sure, they ate the sagebrush and they were afraid that the antelope were going to die because the antelope had nothing to eat. But they're, they are becoming a severe problem in Oregon again, and they're cyclic and they usually go every seven years and it's weather that predicts. And their eggs can actually even live in four feet of water. You cannot get rid of the eggs, but you want to map where the eggs are so that you can go back to that area when they hatch in the spring and try to eradicate where they're hatching. It's, it's very, actually, I learned, if you want to know about grasshoppers, just ask me questions because I'm very fresh on grasshopper facts at this moment. So there you go. That's my Commissioner report.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Last week during our work session, I was in Colorado reviewing some safety training centers for law enforcement and wires and different folks. And I will put some information together and share it at one of the upcoming meetings. But it was very interesting. This Core Three is an organization and it's being developed between the tri-county and it's having to do with training and emergency services and things. It's a facility that's looking to be constructed in Redmond. That involves all state, county, federal officials. So I'll give you an update, send you some pictures. It's quite interesting. Denver Airport was quite interesting. There was a plane that caught on fire. Yeah.
Don't get an airline ticket, huh?
All right. Anybody else have anything?
Mike has his hand up. What is it? Is it the grasshopper question?
Guys, I could come up with a lot of those. Just clarification, SRS, is that Secure Rural Schools?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Well, get up here. I don't know. You know, I have his card. I can call Pete when I, we get done with the meeting.
Two for one, the lure and the sinker.
But they, he, they said they were just on the buildings everywhere. I just is amazed that they would eat paint. Yeah.
Good morning. Kara Mikowski on Stahmsik here in Primeville. And I was just coming to share a couple of things and then I wanted clarification on one other Knife River issue. But if you remember, I brought to your attention that I had submitted a dust, uncontrolled dust CUP violation on the Knife River. And the response that Knife River had given back was they looked at their records and they showed nothing wrong with the equipment that day, which was, as Seth agreed, was not satisfactory. Could have done better. So we have another one. I'm going to be submitting to Lewis today after your meeting. And this one took place less than four months since the last one. And I'm just wondering, I'm hoping that we hold them a little more accountable other than they just thought there was nothing wrong with their equipment that day. And I didn't send over two pictures to Lewis too. So just to make you know.
Okay, perfect.
You say you're sending them today?
I am.
Okay.
I don't know if he's there, but I can get it.
I saw him this morning. I'll talk to him.
Um, the other thing is clarification. I had, we had sent in a CUP violation on Knife River for the Woodward pit on the sediment. And Knife River answered back. This is Lewis's information he gave us on the response. And I think he gets information from John and from Will as well. Input, is that correct? On how to respond to the?
I don't know.
So it says here, received Knife River response on 2/18/25, which summarizes that onsite overburden was used to fill the cell six feet above groundwater surface level. And then conversation, it, it seems that Knife River says that this is no longer a mining cell because they filled it up with overburden six feet above ground level. And I need clarification on that. So I asked Lewis, I said, you know, can I actually see Knife River's response? I mean, it's a mining cell that they mined and it's still probably 10 to 15 feet deep approximately. So to me, it still sounds like a mining cell. And I know you watch, come, when those settling ponds, they're going to want to empty them because the aggregate they're breeding in is very dirty and they're going to fill up pretty quick. So I know without a doubt, they're going to take that and they're going to want to dump it back in that settling pond. As far as I know, there's still water in it too. So I need a little clarification. I, I wanted the records and Lewis said, well, you had to fill out a records request form. I found it on the website and it was 25 cents a page and $40 an hour. And I'm confused with that because I'm the one that brought the CUP violation to the county's attention. And now I have to pay to, you know, get clarification.
You want me to take that?
You gotta take.
Yeah, so first, yeah, obviously. So the first, it's not mining cell. It's mining pond is the term of art that's used. And so when it goes above the groundwater, it's no longer in industry terms, a mining pond. And that's the only language we have in our CUP. It's, it's not defined in the CUP itself. It just says mining pond. Yeah, it's for the public records request. That's mostly so we can track it. That's a document that won't be hard to produce. But so we can track the request, the, as long as you want a PDF of the documents, there's no charge for that. The, the charge is for printing. It's a printing fee. And so I would recommend you submit the public records requests so we can track it. We'll get in touch with you. I would imagine this would be a de minimis request and so there wouldn't be a fee.
Because it, it would help to see why they're saying it's not a mining pond anymore.
Yeah. So like I said, submit the request and then.
And then, and then you can even just print it at home if you want to.
Yeah. The, the cost is for our printing charges. You don't, we don't need to do that.
Um, the third thing is Knife River's, all this weather we've been having, the track out onto Stahmsik is going all the way down to Elliott and it's bad and it's thick. I know they've had like a brush roll, you know, in front of a tractor and attachment and that did somewhat. But I mean, remember they got that extension from 40 and 40, 40 and 40 out trucks. Well, now it's 80 and 80. So we're looking at a lot of truck out. And it's just not getting cleaned. I mean, you go by and your, your vehicle's just covered with it. So I'm wondering, can the CUP be amended to include that they have, there's pictures here I took online of wash, you know, truck wheel washout stations? And I'm wondering why Dogami, and I'm wondering if Dogami, that's a requirement for mining. Seems like it would be.
That just seems like a good citizen thing they should be doing. I don't know. What, what do you, what's your comment, what's your comment there?
Those are in construction zones. Those are required. You have to try to clean out approach on your driveway before you get to a public street. So we might, we might check into that on the construction aspect.
We're looking at, I don't know if that would be a modification of the CUP. That might be hard, but, but definitely talking to Dogami and talking to Knife River. And that, like you said, it's a good neighbor thing.
Yeah, that, that should just be a good neighbor thing and they should, they should stand up to that.
When you Google AI comes up that Dogami does require, but then when you go to click on the article, it's just a blither of not telling you what you need to know.
Barbage.
So.
Give me pictures or anything like that. You can send me and I'll, I'll reach out to Von Blazer and.
Yeah. Are you talking about this? Are you talking about the actual track out?
If you have the actual track out.
Next storm. Okay.
And I would think that they would oblige if you, if you do that, if you get some pictures and get them to John, I would think that they would want to oblige. I can't imagine they wouldn't.
All right. Thank you for your time.
I was wondering if you were going to sit in the corner and be quiet.
Morning, Mr. Zemmerly.
Good morning.
You, you still do have to say your name even though we know who you are. Okay.
A little update. You just told me that the funding for the next round of testing has been approved.
Oh, good. Good.
Last Friday.
Okay.
Very good.
Very good.
Expect to move that testing ahead as quickly as possible.
Oh, good. All righty. Well, that is very good news to end the day with.
It's not over yet.
Well, okay. What's the bad news?
Well, as we all know, Knife River is now in control of the Stafford site. We call it the Stafford site, right? And the CUP on that has its site specific for that site of 95 acres. I have a complete deal on it from Dogami. There, I think there are a lot of challenges in that they're moving material from the Stafford site to the Woodward side by the thousands of yards. The reject material and the washout or the sediments out of that are all in the, in the Dogami permits are, are, are all required to be put back for reclamation on the Stafford site. That's according to, and it's 64 pages long. So I think there, there's a co-mingling of the materials from Stafford site onto the Woodward deal. And it seems to me like to tail on what Adam said earlier. I, I think that it's, it gets to an imperative point where the county needs to look at hiring somebody to make sure that those things, a geologist or somebody in the mining industry, to make sure those things are being correctly taken care of. After reading this, the Dogami piece, this is all has to do with the Stafford site. There is a lot of stuff being missed. So the Stafford site permits are still under, under BBM. That's a, that's part of, that's Mason Stafford Control Set or Mark Stafford, that's pardon. And, and the Stafford site appears to be, of the 95 acres appears to be pretty well mined out at the rate that it's going. Because there, Knife River's moving a lot of material. Is there going to be an expansion of that site into the adjacent ground like they, like Knife River tried with the veneer site? And I think the co-mingling of those things really needs to be considered and evaluated and looked at by the county.
You want to take that one as well? Um, so.
Seems like it's your, your department.
Stafford side is, is interesting. So that location is being, there's, there's a process right now at the city to be included into their UGB. And they had a meeting about that last night. They're going to have another one, I think, coming up. If that moves forward, the, the site is supposed to be zoned while it's still under our control to be zoned as a, as a like zone. And so it would then switch from EFU to heavy industrial. And then soon thereafter, I believe it's going to be annexed in and become part of the city. So that, that removes our control and it removes the requirements for things like reclamation, as far as I understand.
Because the, the 95 acres that's under that permit has not been reclaimed in accordance with the, how it was supposed to be.
It's another thing I can bring up with Von.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dick. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Justin Alderman managing editor of the Primeville Review. First, I do want to, excuse me. I do want to thank the Commissioners for addressing our concerns which we've been raising. Obviously, we, you know, are a bit frustrated. It took five months. But we are satisfied that the county is addressing what we feel has been deficiencies in the public records process in consideration, namely of fee waivers. I did want to bring up today the, a, a little bit of a concern. I know there's going to be progress moving forward by the county manager to improve the current process and make sure it's within the standards expected under Oregon's public records law. And I do understand you have received some guidance from the Oregon Public Records Advocate, which I hope will be beneficial. But then also speaking with the Public Records Advocate, one of our concerns, which we've seen as a matter of practice in some of the response from county council, has been that all responses seem to be providing estimates that are to the maximum timeframe allowed under ORS 192, 324 and 329, which is a five-day or five-business-day acknowledgement period, followed by a 10-day production or response period as that statute outlines. All of our responses now formally seem to indicate that we will receive that response at the expiration of those 15 combined days. We have an existing request related to a dive into the Ag Extension Service District. And that, I believe actually we were told would receive a response by the 19th today. So we're still expecting that that response is coming in. If I am correct on my recollection that that, today is the day, we would obviously ask for an appropriate fee reduction or fee waiver due to the public interest that this matter would have. My hope is, and my request actually is that the Commissioners also, for outstanding requests until your process is formally changed, empower this, the county manager to also, as necessary, review those requests and make appropriate determinations. And that would help reduce the undue, any further undue delay, which would require us to come before this body at its next meetings. And also I think is, would, would be appropriate considering that our publication has exerted a tremendous amount of resource and time and faced significant undue delay over almost half a year in our requests just related to our look into the N-RAC. Again, the Primeville Review continues to grow. We continue to see extraordinary results on readership. I think our last stats as of yesterday indicated 35,000 unique visits to our publication site. So we know by providing our publication for free and keeping the citizens of Crook County informed of things that are going on within local government, it is creating a significant benefit. And we hope to continue to move forward in a way that can provide those, that information to the public at no cost. We are the only no-cost local general interest news publication in Crook County. And again, I continue to look forward to the county's progress on these issues. I know there was a bit of contention, but again, I think. Um, I know there was a bit of contention, but again, um, I think, um, I, or I hope that you see that, uh, our publication is committed uh, to trying to work in a collaborative and proactive manner. We extended the olive branch of the informal facilitated dispute resolution with the Oregon Public Records Advocate to begin with, uh, versus seeking what would have been the petition with the district attorney. And then of course, from there, the potential, uh, litigation, which normally doesn't, uh, benefit every, uh, anybody. Uh, so thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions related, uh, to that. Um, and, uh, I hopefully foresee that this may be the last, um, existing request that, um, will need to, uh, potentially, uh, go under, um, or at least we would like to see under the purview of the, uh, the county manager.
No questions?
Commissioners, would you like me to address that?
What, what?
I.
I don't think there's even a, was there a question?
There were some statements there.
Well, I, I don't.
I don't, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's worth addressing.
I have no.
But do you have, but is there an actual question? You're just saying that you appreciate what we've done and you look forward to working with Will.
Yes, and I, I, but I am also requesting, um, that the commissioners consider, um, empowering the county manager to also address, to ensure that those, uh, requests are addressed timely, uh, any, um, existing records requests that are outstanding, one of which I anticipate a response today and that thus would be preparing to, uh, request a.
You missed the motion.
Fee waiver.
We offered him to do the public records requests. The public records request, we did not state it was NREC or Ag Extension or whatever. It was public records requests.
Okay. I, I think there's a lot of, there wasn't, uh, complete clarity on that particular motion, Commissioner. So I do appreciate that, uh, clarification then.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Didn't you already go twice?
Adam, you know.
I'm just, I'm just.
If you're asking about the fish again, no. We're, we're in. Okay.
Adam McCosky, uh, Stahmsik. Michael, probably a comment on this one's not going to be on Knife River, probably till the end. But anyway, just out of curiosity, you know, we, we listened to the hub do the presentation. Everybody's asking for money.
Sure.
It all comes out of the general fund. It all comes out of our taxes.
We can, uh, we can, uh, increase your taxes if you'd like us.
Well, I'm sure you could. And I appreciate what they're doing, but I know we're looking throughout the country, the federal government, everybody's looking at tightening their budgets. They don't have the money. Everybody's living on a credit card and all that. Just a consideration, I appreciate what they're doing. They're a private entity, uh, just a county on how much, I, I couldn't really figure out exactly how much they wanted from the county, but it looked like a lot of money. Um, just a comment from a citizen, a concerned citizen that we, if I have to live on a budget, everybody's got to live on a budget. And I appreciate what you guys said. We're not going to make a decision and we're going to look at it and whatever decision you make, you make. But I would think the other citizens here, when it comes out of the general fund, it's not free. It's, somebody's paying for it.
I appreciate.
But I have a suggestion for the hub and I wish they were here. Maybe they can ask for a grant from Knife River. Cause they have a lot of money.
Good suggestion, Adam.
So another thing, just really quick, and it does go back to the mine across the street. When Karen was talking about, uh, how they placed the, the, the sediment back in there. They don't have a mining pond anymore and all that. And, and then when you bring this forward, there's water in there. The responses from Knife River, who's checking to see that they're actually telling you it's six feet? Because I could probably look up and I'm probably going to, because I have nothing else to do apparently, is to look up the records when they were testing the site prior to getting, you know, the permit. They drilled test holes everywhere and they tell you exactly when it hit water across the street from us. It's 10 feet. If the pit is 15 feet deep still, how do you get six feet above groundwater? Cause that's what it says on that mining pond that they did. How do you get there? Who checks? And it kind of goes back to what we were talking about on all new processes. Maybe looking back at the old process on this site is who's going to, maybe somebody needs to go actually and check this. And then I heard, uh, the other day that Deschutes County, when they were issuing CUPs to Knife River, one of the stipulations in there is we are going to hire the county, hire a third party to monitor the CUP. But the cost is not from the county. The cost is going to be Knife River's cost. But the county hires that person, maybe in the future, just bringing that up, if that is true, and I haven't checked.
Idea.
That's a good idea to do that.
I'll ask about that. That's a good idea.
Cause then there's somebody that knows something and then goes out there because right now we file a complaint. You guys go out or they just send you a response and yeah, is it true? Is it not? I don't know.
Deschutes County's agri code is going to be something I look very hard at because I've, I've heard that is much better, uh, as far as that.
It's a really good idea.
Yeah. Compensating for risk. And so, yeah, that's, that's a hundred percent something we'll look at. Perfect.
That was actually a very good suggestion.
Very good. I'm glad you came back up.
Thank you.
Very glad, Adam. Better than the fish.
All right. Well, I'm sure I'll come up with something about grasshoppers at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Forgotten the answer by then though.
Any other comments?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have to sign before you adjourn? No, we're good. Okay. Yeah. Uh, second.
Motion made, made the second to adjourn any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Barney, aye.
Okay, perfect.
So moved.
Sweet. At, at least we ended it a happy new.